To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brett.
Play with me. Father, we want to thank you for the wonderful weather we are experiencing. With a bit of rain, we will definitely feel like spring around here. With the thought of spring, it also is time of testing for our students. Father, please be with our students and staff as they prepare for testing, as it can be very stressful. Be with our Board of Education as they make decisions affecting our district, and also with our men and women of the armed forces as they protect us here and abroad. They're putting their lives on the line for us. We can honor them by giving our total support. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Be seated. Jan, when you call the roll, please.
Mr. Clark?
Present.
Dr. Kincaid?
Here.
Mr. Newsom?
Here.
This is Tru.
Okay, we do have enough for a quorum. We'll go on with business. Item two dot one, Presentation of Employee of the Month and Friends of Education Award. Our first award tonight is the Certified Employee of the Month. Goes to Tina Fisher, counselor and curriculum specialist at Woodlands Elementary.
Tina is doing training in Ohio tonight, so...
So she isn't going to be here.
She is not going to be here, so we'll recognize her in March.
Okay. We'll move on to the Support Employee of the Month. Jeremy Runyon, custodian at Garfield Elementary.
In recognition for always going above and beyond your custodial duties to meet the needs of Garfield Elementary staff and students, from answering phones and dispensing medication when office staff is busy, to fixing technology glitches when computers and proboards won't work, you're always there to make things run smoothly for us. You serve on our Health and Safe Schools Committee, and you're very passionate about the safety needs of our students and staff, and even with all this extra, you still make our, you still make Garfield shine like a new penny. It brings great joy to our staff and to honor you for the work that you do and for being such a conscientious employee. Thank you.
Congratulations. Our last award tonight is the Friend of Education. Goes to the First Christian Church Friend of the District. Shelley will present it.
I have Pastor Larry Metzger here tonight. He's the pastor of First Christian Church, so Pastor Metzger, if you'll come on up. Pastor Larry Metzger, Shawna Lamb, and the members of the First Christian Church are dedicated to making sure that every elementary student in Ponca City that needs a coat receives a coat. It is so nice for our school counselors to see a need and know this need will be met immediately through this ministry. When a counselor calls the church to express a student's need for a coat, the person taking the call is always so friendly, and a coat is usually delivered that very day. Representatives from the church do not ask about the economic status of the student or why the student needs a coat. They just make sure they have one. They clearly do not provide this ministry to bring attention to the church. They simply provide this service to help the students in our schools have a warm coat. This is a ministry that this church has had for several years, and although we know they do not do it for a pat on the back or for a Friend of Education Award, we want them to know that this caring service is making a difference for our students. Even though they may not receive a thank you note from a student or their family, we recognize and appreciate the First Christian Church of Ponca City for their commitment to making sure students in Ponca City have a warm coat for cold winter days. Thank you so much, Pastor Metzger.
Thank you. Pastor Metzger, if you and Jeremy will follow Mary, the lady in the dark sweater thereabouts, you'll take your picture. Next item is three point O, Public Comment. As most of you may be aware, several months ago, the board changed our policy on how to address the board from comments from the public, and I don't believe we had anyone sign up this month. We've got a new set of rules that we, regulations that we follow for addressing the board. So with that, we'll move on to item four, the Superintendent's Report. State Update, Aid Update Report from Dr. Pennington, which is something that I'm sure everybody on the board, everybody is going to be excited to hear this report.
As you know, a couple of months ago, the board took the action to give me the authority to enter into a lawsuit against the state of Oklahoma if a change was not made in the state aid calculation. And basically, it was involving a mistake that had been made in how state aid was calculated. And what had been happening is that we were being charged too much through the funding formula. Basically, remember the way the funding formula works is if the state determines that it costs a hundred dollars to educate a child, and if the state can provide fifty dollars, then you get, you can provide fifty, then the state provides you fifty. If you can provide ten, the state provides ninety. If your local taxes generate ninety dollars of the cost of educating a child, they provide ten. In that formula, the law reads that if you have an assessment ratio of above eleven percent in either real property or the commercial, personal, ag, personal property section, that whatever dollars you generate with that assessment ratio of above eleven percent stay in your local district. In K County, the assessment ratio for commercial, personal, and ag, personal is fourteen percent. So that means of the dollars that had been collected, the amount that was above eleven percent should have been staying here with us. And that had not happened. It had never happened. We were able to convince the State Department of that mistake, or at least bring it to their attention. We then brought the mistake to the attention of the Tax Commission. After a meeting with Superintendent Berisi and her staff, a decision was made by the State Department to make a correction. It took them until February the second, Brenda, to get that made, so it was a long-drawn-out process. The result of that was that sixteen million dollars was redistributed through the funding formula. So what that means is that there was sixteen million dollars that had been collected and charged that should not have been. The result of that was that Ponca City received a state aid allocation increase of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars where we received our state aid statement on February That's important, but that's not the story. The story is, is the amount of money that will be staying here. Because remember what the funding formula does? It just balances out what you need. So what we saw was a shift in that February 2nd document. We had a lot, we had less chargeables, so we received more state aid. But when you add our chargeables and our state aid together, they were basically the same amount of money. I think they'd gone up by maybe twenty-five thousand dollars over what they'd been at the first of the year. What's important is the dollars that are not leaving K County, they're not leaving our district. And we believe that that number is going to be somewhere around nine hundred thousand dollars. So there's nine hundred thousand dollars in collections that will not be chargeable against us this year. So when it's all said and done, we have approximately nine hundred thousand dollars more to spend this year than we had at the beginning of the school year. That should be whatever, whatever the state, amount of state aid we get, or whatever the state funding formula does, we think that nine hundred thousand should be consistent from this point forward, depending upon some factors. The first of all is the assessment ratio stays at fourteen percent and doesn't, is not lowered, and the county assessor can do that on their own. They don't have to have permission from us, from the county commissioner, from the Excise Board. The county assessor controls that assessment ratio. The second factor is, is whether the value of personal and ag, personal property in K, in our district stays the same. If the value of property goes up, then there should, then that nine hundred thousand dollars should increase. If it goes down, that nine hundred thousand dollars, it won't be, it'll be less than nine hundred thousand dollars. So we hope that commercial, personal, and ag, personal property in this district continues to grow in value. You kind of think, I mean, you know, every year you get an estimate and these, and you see whether our, whether our, our values, our property values in the district are up or down. They grow a little bit each year, so we would anticipate, we would think that we would anticipate those things would grow. Of course, the biggest factor is the refinery. That's where the vast majority of this value is from. And so we hope that Phillips 66 continues to expand and grow and add new equipment and add value to the refinery. The more, the more the refinery, the more taxable value that is at the refinery, the more of that money, of that three percent stays within the community. So those are the factors, and, and we, again, we're pretty sure that we're going to stay around that nine hundred thousand. We would anticipate that anything will grow a little bit as time goes on.
Has there been further discussions or any more about the retroactive collection?
We have a meeting in Oklahoma City on Thursday. I've sent an invitation to the districts that were most affected by this, and we're going to have a meeting at ten o'clock on Thursday to discuss next steps, to see, kind of take the pulse of the group and see what people want to do or what they think we should do. Adam Leeming was at a Leadership Oklahoma meeting last Friday and posed the question to Joy Hoffmeister about what the state was going to do about the last twenty-two years. And her report, and I don't, I mean, I think it's, some of us fear this, that if the school districts who have lost money file a lawsuit, that the legislature will just enact legislation that will take the money away. And I don't know that that's true. I think that, you know, those are always, that's a political question, and you probably look at the legislature and you see we're members, districts that have members that benefited and districts that didn't. And I think the fact that, that if you look at it, if you look at the districts that benefited, the vast majority of those districts are in western Oklahoma. They're west of I-35. There's a couple of districts in Pittsburgh County that picked up a little bit of money, but it's basically an eastern versus western fight if a fight develops over this. And I don't think there's enough folks, I think that that's kind of splits the legislature, so to speak, and I don't know if there's enough votes there to, to do anything punitive against districts. And again, you get down to, you know, how much money could we possibly get or anybody possibly get? And, you know, as Gary told us at the beginning, he thought maybe there was a chance we might be able to get three years' worth of revenue. Probably could never get all twenty-two years. And so we'll talk about it and see what the consensus is. Obviously, there's nothing that prevents any school district from pursuing that. I mean, you, as a board, could direct me to, to hire an attorney and, and look into the matter. And I think without a doubt, you're looking at a case that's going to go before the state Supreme Court, so you're looking at, I think, a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars before you ever do anything. And, and I, and I think there's not any precedence for this. There's, there's nothing, there's no, I don't think, I don't know what, if there's a law that says that if the state makes a mistake, they're liable for that mistake, or how that would be done. So it's a, I mean, it would be a precedent-setting case, and there's lots of factors to consider how this would play out. Gary, you got any thing to add?
Well, I had a client years ago that had been paying property taxes on a piece of property that the treasurer's office and the assessor's office were assessing her on, and she figured out one day that it didn't exist. Not only did she not own it, it didn't exist. So I was charged with the task of recovering that, and we were able to recover three years' worth. So there's a little bit of precedence on, at a micro level.
Right. So anyway, we're, as I say, we're going to get together and talk about it and, and see, you know, kind of what the consensus is. My, and I gotta tell you, guys, I, my opinion on this changes every day. There's a, you know, I think you can make an argument that, that the students of this district have suffered because of the miss by the state tax commission not following the law. And, and so there ought to be a remedy for that, and that, and that we, that money was taken away inappropriately from this school district, and, and we should get that money back. There is a part of me that, that says that what's important is that we've got it fixed and we move forward. I don't want to do anything that would harm other school districts. One of the remedies could be that the state would say, "Well, you didn't get the money you should have gotten because it went to other school districts. Those school districts need to pay you back that money." And so that really complicates things because you would find yourself taking money away from school districts and redistributing to other districts. So that, that could create a huge problem and a real division among schools in the state. But I understand, you know, I've had some patrons that have mentioned to me that, you know, if they would have made a mistake, that the state would have come after the money that they did not pay. And so, you know, I, I would like, I would be, for me, a good solution would be that we were able to get some changes made in legislation, put some, some, some obstacles to the assessor's authority to mess with the ratio without either approval of the county commission or the Excise Board. Right now, if you're a school district and, and you, and your assessed value in your district is less than eleven percent on real property, if it's ten percent, you pay a penalty. You don't pay a penalty on the real and commercial, personal property side of that, and I think that would be a solution. You know, the second largest county in the state, Tulsa County, only assesses that property at ten percent. So even, so if we're all subsidizing Tulsa County, and they have enough wealth in Tulsa County, we shouldn't be subsidizing them. So those are, those are some things that I, you know, maybe we could fix. And then if, you know, we had a real strong commitment from the legislature to adequately fund our schools, to make a commitment, then I think that, that I'd rather have adequate funding from this point on than worry about going back and recovering money from the past. So those are just my thoughts, and I'll get some thoughts from others on Thursday.
Any questions for Dr. Pennington?
I was thinking the other night before I passed off, went to sleep, and I know we're audited every year. Is there anybody auditing what the state's doing or the tax commission? Is there an audit? I mean, if there'd been auditing and they'd been done right, they should have caught this twenty-two years ago.
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that, Marvin, but I'll ask.
Because if, if the auditors are missing something too...
Yeah.
There may be some recourse against the auditing firm.
Okay. I'll ask that question.
But if it's unaudited, maybe we ought to think about getting it audited in the future.
Some kind of an audit to make sure that they're pursuing the law.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, moving right along to item five. Five-one is the agenda with commentary. Five-two's the minutes from last meeting. Five-three is the consent agenda contracts under ten thousand dollars. We talked about these in depth at the finance meeting. Most of the consent agenda contracts are fundraisers or booster club activity or things that do not cost the district any money. The only two that I would mention are items twelve and thirteen. There's a Think Circa, which is a pilot program for a reading program that's going to go in over at West Junior High for forty-six hundred dollars. And then there's a Bob Pearlman, and Dr. Pennington was out of town when we talked about this, but I guess he's a consultant type that looks for value enhancements to schools or something.
We bought him in, we brought Bob in five years ago. He's a technology implementation expert, and we brought him in five years ago, and Bob's the guy that provided the kind of the, the plan that became our technology plan that, that put us on the path to a one-to-one initiative and the use of, of, of how we use technology and instruction. And, and, and so we felt like it was a good time to bring him back to look and see, you know, what we've done and, and really what, what should, what should happen in the future where he's been able, through his, through our contacts with him, we've been able to, to, to interact with other school districts that, that, that have vibrant technology pro, and, and I don't, instructional programs that are driven by technology. And especially important in that is, is how do you use technology to engage students? That seems to be the, one of the things that, that if you look at, at what the research shows about student success, one of the things that is really shown to be, have a big payoff is with student engagement. The more engaged students are, the better they do in school. And Bob's done a lot of work in that area. So just kind of gonna, you know, check under the hood, kick the tires, and see how we're doing.
And it's, I think, a five thousand dollar expenditure to bring him in. Any questions or comments on these items? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve five dot one, two, and three.
Motion approved.
Motion made.
Oh, yeah, motion made, I'm sorry.
Seconded by Dr. Kincaid. Comments or questions? Call for the vote. Judy, we're voting on five point one, two, and three, the consent calendar.
Oh. Dr. Kincaid?
I have yet.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
I guess so.
Consent agenda.
Oh, God. Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item six, consideration and vote to approve or not approve the following items, and this is the district financial reports that Brenda and Jan explained to us again in the Finance Committee. Any questions or comments on any of those?
Motion to approve six point one.
Not, I've got a motion from Dawn to approve six point one.
Second.
And a second from Marvin. Comments or questions? Not call for the vote, Jan?
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
This is Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Six point two, consideration of vote to approve or not approve the Ponca City School District Calendar for the 2015-16 school year. I actually sat in on the meeting for that. Shelley, is there anything you want to add? This is next year's school calendar.
No, there's not a lot of room in our school calendar. We had four drafts, and with it being a leap year, we're starting on a Thursday, starting school on a Thursday, which gave us some leeway for all our parameters.
This particular draft was pretty much unanimously agreed upon by twenty-five or thirty people in the meeting. Almost unanimously.
Almost unanimously.
Dawn was there. Comments or questions concerning it? Not, I'd call for a motion to approve six point two, proposed calendar. Have a motion from Marvin and a second from Dr. Kincaid. Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jan?
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six point three, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following contracts. There is one with Sunbelt Staffing for a healthcare provider. We had an employee resign, and so we're having to get a contract person to replace the speech-language services for students. Item B is an agreement with Dell Enterprise for software support and maintenance. It's an annual renewal of an existing contract that basically controls and keeps the Windows operating systems in check. And Ryan told us that if the Chromebooks are rolled out totally successfully, this may be something that we won't have to do next year as much. Item C is a revised agreement with Unique Travel and Transport for the Ponca City Senior High Corral. I believe they're going to the Air Force Academy in Colorado. There wasn't enough students signed up, so it's a per higher price per student, but again, the activity fund is paying for this one. D is the contract with two fellows and a big vehicle, and that's the people that are going to be moving the employees from this building down to the admin building during spring break. It was a twenty-four thousand, four hundred dollar contract, and I think Brett went to three or four different providers, and this was the best price and service availability for it.
Where are they out of?
Tulsa.
Tulsa.
Motion to approve A through D.
Got a motion from Dawn to approve A through D on six point O, if I remember right. Second from, six point three, from Judy. Comments or questions? Not call for the vote, Jan?
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Six point four, this is our change orders. Woodlands Elementary remodel. We had some incorrect pricing on the doors and the frames. If I remember right, Brett, this is going to reduce it about five thousand net on this one. Item B is the change order number four at Woodlands Elementary. It was just some minor little remodels they got into. I think there were some flooring and problems they ran into. Item C is a change order that kind of tripped us all up. We approved several meetings ago, the extra time it would take to move the special aid group down there to finish out some more office space. What we overlooked was the fact that they have a clause in their contract for about five or six hundred dollars a day for miscellaneous expenses. Kind of like when you take your car into the mechanic, at the bottom of your bill, you see shop tools and miscellaneous. Well, it's seventy-one days at five hundred and sixty-three dollars. We approved the extra expense for the build-out. We had just overlooked this one, and we do need to pay for it. We should have included in the original change order, and we'll be more diligent next time. D is elementary re-ruff. Brett had asked for about three hundred dollars last meeting to repair a gas valve. It's unrepairable, and it's going to cost about fifteen hundred dollars now just to replace it in its entirety. Comments or question on any of the change orders? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve six point four in its entirety. Move approval. Motion from Marvin to approve.
Second.
Second from Dawn. Comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six point five, consideration of vote to approve or not approve declaring March 2nd, 2015 as Read Across America Day in Ponca City Public Schools, and Dr. Pennington's going to tell us about how this coincides with Dr. Seuss's birthday. That's what it says on my document.
This is just something we do every year where, where we have groups of typically staff members and parents are brought to the schools, and, and we read Dr. Seuss books, and it's really a pretty good, fun time. If you would like to participate and have not had the opportunity to do that for a while, we'll be more than glad to find a classroom that you can go into and you can read whatever your favorite Dr. Seuss book is. I'm sure we have a copy of it someplace.
Judy's going to prepare green eggs and ham for everybody.
Yeah.
Comments or questions on it? If not, I need a motion to declare March 2nd as Read Across America Day in the Ponca City Public Schools.
On my position.
Motion from Judy, second.
For six point five.
Second from Marvin. Call for the vote?
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Six point six, consideration of vote to approve a proposed executive session. Dr. Pennington, does it have anything, or any of the board members have anything that we need to have an executive session about? If not, we'll skip right past that. That means we'll skip past six seven, six eight. Six point nine, vote to approve or not approve recommendations for termination, reassignments, resignations, and employment of personnel. It was on page eighty-six to eighty-eight of our documents. Any comments or questions about any of those? If not, I'd have a motion to approve.
Someone?
Motion from Dawn, second from Dr. Kincaid. Comments, questions? All in favor? Let's call for the vote.
Okay.
We'll do it individually.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Motion carries. Item seven, new business. Anybody have any new business?
Just have a, something I want the board to think about. Last, after the, last Friday, it came to my attention that, that the, the PTA call for a rally at the Capitol has gained lots of support. It has now been endorsed by COSA, by the Urban, the United Suburban School Association, the School Board Association, and Superintendent Hoffmeister. And so... It has now been endorsed by COSA, by the Urban, the United Suburban School Association, the School Board Association, and Superintendent Hoffmeister. And so we'll be having some discussions with staff and with our parents and see, kind of see what the pulse is for our community, but there's a pretty good chance I'll be coming to you at the March board meeting, asking us to make March 30th one of our snow days. And we haven't used any right now, so we have the flexibility to move those around.
70-degree weather, we may not need any.
Yeah, hopefully we won't. So anyway, again, that'll probably be something to be on the March agenda.
Are you looking at another bus ride?
You know, I, I think that the message I got loud and clear from, from patrons last time is they don't want to ride on the bus, they want to...
Go to the shopping mall.
They want to drive themselves down, and, and they want to, they want to, they want to, after the rallies completed, they, they don't want to have to get on a bus and come back on my schedule. And my schedule pretty much is when the rally's over, we're coming home, so. The thing that's different this year, they're calling it a rally, you know, last year, everything was outside the Capitol. They did not go inside the Capitol. The plans are this year to not only rally outside, but also to go inside. So if you're not doing anything on the 30th, you might want to circle your calendar.
Any other new business? And I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Nobody wants to leave? Have a motion from Judy, and a second.